Good evening, everyone. Call the City Council to order at 8:00 on Monday evening, April 26, 2021. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For this council meeting, we will be implementing the Governor's executive order regarding relief for the open meeting law. This allows the councilors to participate remotely. All the votes will be via roll call. There is one public hearing, and I will go over the process for participating in that public hearing before Agenda Item Number Two. There are 25 items on this evening's agenda, and I will ask the clerk to call the roll to confirm attendance, please. Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner is present.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset is present.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas is present.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera is present.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish is present.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin is present.
I'm next.
Counselor Landers is present.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem is present.
Counselor Aussing.
Counselor Aussing is present.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman is present.
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby is present.
I'm present, sir.
Okay, all City Councilors are participating either in the chamber or remotely. I will now ask the clerk to read Agenda Item Number One. Minutes of City Council Meeting, April 5, 2021.
Mr. President.
Counselor Tenera.
Accept and place on file, please.
Motion is made to accept and place on file the minutes from April 5. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Aussing.
Counselor Aussing votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
I'm present, sir.
The motion to accept and place on file the minutes is approved, 11 in favor and none opposed. Counselor Tenera.
Mr. President, a motion to suspend the rules to allow the mayor to speak regarding the vaccine site. Thank you.
Motion's been requested and seconded to suspend the rules. I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish votes yes.
Counselor Aussing.
Counselor Aussing votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
I'm present, sir.
Mr. Mayor, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. President, members. Again, I just wanted to give you a quick update on where we are as far as our vaccine and COVID actions. And I'll start with the real good news. Tomorrow, all our kids will be back in the schools. High school and the middle school are going back tomorrow for the first day, so we're kind of excited about that. We continue to do testing. We've done about 1,600 tests last week through the stop to spreading through the hospital. It's kind of been a conflicting positivity rate. So for the hospital, we've seen a positivity rate of about 2.5%. Interesting thing is they're usually the higher one. For the city, over the last 14 days, we just crossed the 4% mark. And so it was very interesting, but we only have 54 cases left in the city at this point. And we started, the Health Department has been doing some of the homebound vaccines, so that was good. Last week, we got 50 doses of Moderna, so they're getting those out right away. The Health Department did not get any vaccines this week from the state. We continue to get out the messaging through the message boards, through different banners, working with some of the different churches in the city to get information to some of those people that might be not as in tuned with the community and what we're doing. We actually did a vaccination clinic down at the Bethel Presbyterian Church. We gave out 157 vaccines, working between our Health Department and the Marlboro Hospital. So we're really excited about that. And we're continuing to do a vaccine clinic on, at the Marriott on Felton Street. The good news is we finally have vaccines, not from the state, but we're getting them from the federal government, so we're really thankful for that, through the Edwin M. Kennedy Health Clinics. There's one over in Framingham, down in Milford, and up in Worcester. So the hospital has an agreement with them, and we've been doing almost 750 doses a day at this point, and that looks like that's going to continue. We received a total of just around 800 from the state that went to the hospital, but with these additional doses coming from the federal government, we're really excited about it, and we're able to really pump some people through there. It continues, the testing continues down at New England Sports Center from 8:00 in the morning till noon time, so if you want a test, you can go down there. And we have openings at the Marriott, so even tomorrow, I checked before I came down, there were still a few openings for tomorrow. So residents can either go on our Public Health website or the Marlboro Hospital website and get vaccinated. So it's really, really simple to get in there. I'm fortunate, I got my second one done, and I had no side effects, so I'm excited about that. But there are openings, and I encourage all our residents to get out there. And I know Counselor Pearlman's going to hit me, so before she does, based on the state's information from last Thursday, 44% of our residents have had at least one dose, and 24% are fully vaccinated at this point. So I think that's low, to be honest with you. I think we're doing a little bit better than that, but that's based on that state website as of Thursday, the 22nd, they only update it once a week. So, you know, we're excited, at least we're moving in the right direction, and we really want to get everyone vaccinated. So if you haven't been down there and you're over 16, get an appointment and get down there and get vaccinated, so. Questions from the council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's nice to hear some positive news after a couple of months of not so much positive news. Counselor Orem.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the mayor on a couple of points that were made, I was a little confused with the discussion on positivity rates. The discussion brought up the hospital and the city end of it. So is this the testing that's being done by the hospital on their part, and are we talking about the testing that we're conducting at the New England Sports Center? I was confused with that discussion on, you had said 2%, 4% hospital versus city. If you could maybe explain it a little more, I'm not for sure what you were trying to inform us of.
Yeah, tying the numbers in, we get our numbers for the Marlboro testing period, everyone in the city that is testing, whether it's the health clinics, whether it's the emergency centers, the hospital, whatever it is. The numbers from the hospital are simply tests that are done through the hospital itself or testing that's done through the New England Sports Center through the stop to spread. Both the hospital and the stop to spread were in the twos, 2.2, and then one was 2.6 or 7 or something. The average was about 2.5. The city's 14-day rate, using the state's numbers, came out to just over 4% this week. So it's really, depending on where you get your information, but citywide, based on what the state has, were just over 4%. And like I said, usually it's the hospital and the stop to spread that is a little bit higher, which is surprising, but...
And I noticed that we do have our electronic signboard up, that city residents can sign up through the city website, and they will get preference to the city site, is that correct?
That's correct, and it's really, really simple to do. Please go on there, just check a time, they give you all the options of the times. I mean, it's really simple to sign up, so...
And my last question was related to the ambassadors that we talked about prior. How are we doing with our population base that may not have the transportation, not the home bounds, I know you're going to home bounds, but people that may live in an area where they can walk, say, on Lincoln Street, for example, or say, the other side of the city, down on Route 20, but they don't have transportation? Are our ambassadors getting out to that, those populations to explain how to get the vaccination and to find ways to get them to the vaccination sites? And that's my last question, and thank you for your answers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We have three ambassadors out there that are bilingual, and they've been really pounding the pavement up on the hill. We're trying to figure out a walk-in site up in that area. It gets a little difficult with the logistics because of tying in the computers with what the hospital is doing. So we're utilizing all their services because they're the only game in town getting the vaccines from the federal government, so we can't rely on the state. And so we have to work with the hospital. Hopefully, we're going to be doing something up on the hill so people can just walk in. But right now, we're trying to get in all those different churches and parishes to let people know, first of all, it's safe, and encourage them to get the vaccines. And we have worked with some of our transportation systems in getting people picked up and dropped off through the contract that MEDC has, where the vans are being run down at the senior center. So we're trying to utilize every resource we can to get everyone that we possibly can get vaccinated out there. And the older population, the total vaccine rate is very, very high, so that's good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Orem. Counselor Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. To the end of the year, I just really have one more. Sorry. Thank you. I really just have one question as far as testing in schools. Is there any group testing done in schools or anything like that set up?
I don't know what the superintendent's planning on doing moving forward as far as the group testing goes. They got a couple of different things. They have thousands of test kits up there that we're turning around, so I'm not sure what he's going to implement up there, or he's going to give us at the school committee an update tomorrow night.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you, Counselor Dusset. Counselor Pearlman.
Thank you, Mr. President, and through you to the mayor. So appreciate the update that you were able to give, and I appreciate the state numbers of our population here in Marlboro. I appreciate you doing that. I was actually able to go get my first dose of the vaccine over at the location here in Marlboro and was very impressed, so I echo your sentiments earlier that everyone should go and get vaccinated, and they can do it right here in the community. My question is around, you know, if people are having issues with the online portal, should they call the Board of Health? Should they call your office directly? What would be the mechanism for people who want assistance signing up?
We've been encouraging people that are having some trouble with the portal. Ours is very, very simple. It's not like going to the state website. But if they are having problems, they can call directly down to the senior center, and they'll help them out down there.
Great, thank you. Any other question? I know you mentioned how it seems like with the Board of Health receives vaccines from the state, but the partnership we've been able to have for the hospital has been from the federal government. Do we know how long we will be continuing to receive vaccines through that partnership? Is there a timeline, or we're just kind of taking them as they come?
The health clinics and CVS and Walgreens, the larger pharmacies, have been receiving a substantial amount of vaccines from the federal government. So we're optimistic that it's going to be positive moving forward. If we can get another good month out of this, getting them out the way we're getting them out, it's going to make a huge difference going into the summer.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, I really appreciate it. And thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Pearlman. Any other questions from any of the councilors? Any questions from any of the councilors? Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good to see some smiling faces again. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, Agenda Item Number Two. Now is the time for the public hearing on the petition for Massachusetts Electric in Verizon, New England, to install a new pole number five and anchor, which will allow for the removal of the pole and tree guy wire at 43 Berland Road, Order Number 21-108258. Okay, reminder, this will be a public hearing, will be taken in four stages. Before that, some comments on the public hearing. Please keep your computer or phone muted when not speaking, so to unmute, to speak, you want to hit star six. Just like if the public was in the chamber, please be respectful while waiting your turn to speak. The system does not work when everyone tries to speak at once. We'll do our best to give each individual an opportunity to speak. Please be patient. Do not watch the meeting on TV, at least during the public hearing part. There is a delay. Remote access capability is real time. Should there be any technical issues, we'll recess and see if we can correct them. And then at the conclusion of the public meeting, we'll recess to clear the system, and the council will continue with its business. So this public hearing will take in four stages, public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant, questions from the public, public speaking in opposition, and questions from the council. So with that, public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant. Please state your name and address, please.
Michael Fraser, National Grid, 245 South Main Street, Hope Dale.
Thanks, Mike. You just want to mention the project?
Yep, so it's going to be installing new pole five on Berland Road. This will allow us to remove the tree guy that's currently holding up pole six by removing the current angle that's on pole six.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Are there any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Again, it's star six to unmute your phone. Hearing none, I'll close that part of the public hearing. Any questions from the public? Are there any questions from the public? Questions from the public? And again, star six, if you're listening on the phone, to unmute. Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Any public speaking in opposition? Public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? And again, it's star six to unmute your phone. Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the city councilors? Counselor Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a comment, as you know, that's in public services, and we will meet, and Mike, I hope you can make it, May 4, 6:30, and we'll make sure you're first on the agenda. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other questions from the city councilors? Questions from the city councilors? Any questions from the city councilors? Hearing none, I close that part of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and it is in public services. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number Three. Communication from Assistant City Solicitor Jason Peaks on behalf of Counselor Irish regarding proposed rezoning of land at 290 Hudson Street, identified as Map 43, Parcel 38, from limited industrial to Residence A3.
Mr. President, this is Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to move to refer this to Urban Affairs and the Planning Board to set a public hearing for May 24 and to advertise.
Motion is made and seconded to refer to Urban Affairs, the Planning Board, have a public hearing on May 24, and to advertise. Is there any discussion on the motion? Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Counselor Roby. I know that we did discuss this, and in my opinion, this is a common sense approach to government, so thank you, Counselor Roby, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Irish. Any other comments or questions from the council? Hearing none, on the motion to refer to Urban, the Planning Board, advertise and set a public for May 24, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby votes yes.
Counselor Aussing.
Counselor Aussing votes yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish votes yes.
I'm present, sir.
The motion to refer the rezoning to Urban Affairs, the Planning Board, to advertise and set a public hearing for May 24 is approved, 11 in favor and none opposed. Agenda Item Number Four. Communication from the mayor regarding grant acceptance in the amount of $178,744 from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation awarded to the DPW for a bike lane extension from the Assabett Valley Rail Trail to Main Street. Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Perfect timing. I think this is going to fit wonderfully with the new reconstruction of Lincoln Street. I want to thank the DPW and the Engineering Division. It was quite a team effort, and going forward, like I said, this will help revitalize the area. So motion to approve the grant.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the grant. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, on the motion to approve the grant, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Aussing.
Counselor Aussing votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
I'm present, sir.
The motion to approve the grant is approved, 11 in favor and none opposed. Agenda Item Number Five. Communication from the mayor regarding grant acceptance in the amount of $20,000 for the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security awarded to the Fire Department for the purchase of individual portable radios, mobile radios, and repeaters for the department's vehicles. Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to the Marlboro Fire Department, and motion to approve the grant.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the grant. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll to approve the grant. Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Aussing.
Counselor Aussing votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish votes yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
I'm present, sir.
The motion to approve the grant is approved, 11 in favor and none opposed. Agenda Item Number Six. Communication from the mayor regarding the appointment of Tin Tway as Building Commissioner for a three-year term, the date of council confirmation. Counselor Dumas.
Refer to personnel.
Motion is made and seconded to refer the appointment to the Personnel Department. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll to refer the appointment to the Personnel Department. Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby votes yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Aussing.
Counselor Aussing votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
And Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
I'm present, sir.
The motion to refer the appointment to the Personnel Committee is approved, 11 in favor and none opposed. Agenda Item Number Seven. Communication from the mayor regarding the appointment of Mary Jo Narakhi to the License Board for a six-year term from date of council confirmation. Counselor Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Refer to personnel.
Motion is made and seconded to refer to the Personnel Department. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll to refer to the Personnel Committee. Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers votes yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Aussing.
Counselor Aussing votes yes.
I'm present, sir.
The motion to refer the appointment to the Personnel Committee is approved, 11 in favor and none opposed. Agenda Item Number Eight. Communication from the mayor regarding the reappointments of Gregory Matrakis and David Bouvier to the License Board for six-year terms respectively from date of council confirmation and the designation of Gregory Matrakis as Chair. Counselor Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Refer to personnel.
Motion is made and seconded to refer to the Personnel Committees. Is there any discussion on the motion? Counselor Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I really just have one concern that's going to be expressed within the Personnel Committee. These three people being appointed to the License Board would prefer to see them in staggered terms, so, and we'll discuss that in the Personnel Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dusset. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, on the motion to refer to the Personnel Committee, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish votes yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counselor Aussing.
Counselor Aussing votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
I'm present, sir.
The motion to refer the appointments to the Licensing Board to the Personnel Committee is approved, 11 in favor and none opposed. Agenda Item Number Nine. Communication from the mayor regarding the reappointments to the Conservation Commission of Edward Clancy for a three-year term to expire in April 26, 2024, in addition to Dennis Demers and David Williams for two-year terms respectively to expire in April 23, 2023. Counselor Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Refer to Personnel.
Even Mr. Clancy?
Yeah.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Personnel Committees. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll to refer the appointments to the Personnel Committee.
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby votes yes.
Counselor Tanara.
Counselor Tanara votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Ossing.
Counselor Ossing votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counselor Perlman.
Counselor Perlman votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
The motion to refer the appointments to the Personnel Committee is approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item number ten.
Communication from the mayor regarding the proposed tax increment financing agreement with BJ's Wholesale Club, Inc., who will be leasing two buildings comprising of 168,581 square feet located at 350 Campus Drive and 19,244 square feet located at 100 Campus Drive, MAP 111, Parcel 1.
Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to refer to the Finance Committee, please.
Motion is made and seconded to refer to the Finance Committee. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President, Counsel Orem.
Counselor Orem.
If we can get a comparison chart of what the estimates would have been without the TIF, I went through the package, and I see the 100%, 100% reduction for the first four to five years, but if we can have maybe our financial officer put together what will be gained with the building permits and so forth, and new growth, and also building permits themselves, and what will be lost through the TIF through those years, I'd like to see how it balances out. And obviously, it's nice to see additional business coming to Marlborough. Thank you.
Certainly. So, I'm sure that the mayor will have that information for the Finance Committee when the Finance Committee takes it up here in the near term, but that information will be available, Counsel Orem.
Thank you.
Counselor Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I was concerned about this TIF, so I did some digging and talked to Meredith at MEDC. The TIF really focuses on the parking garage, not necessarily the buildings or anything else. So, you know, that's a significant factor as far as, you know, the amount of real estate's being covered by this TIF. You know, the location itself is a marquee location for the region, for headquarters, so I think that it's really an asset that, you know, BJ's discovered that, oh, this is available, you know, so. But anyway, we'll cover more on financing, so thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dusset. Any other comments from the counselors? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll to refer the TIF to the Finance Committee.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Ossing.
Counselor Ossing votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers votes yes.
Counselor Perlman.
Counselor Perlman votes yes.
Counselor Tanara.
Counselor Tanara votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
On the motion to refer the TIF to the Finance Committee, it is approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item number eleven.
Communication from the mayor regarding a request for the council to adopt a 90-day housing moratorium on the acceptance of any new multifamily housing projects.
Could I ask the city clerk to read the mayor's letter, please?
Honorable President Ossing and counselors, I am requesting the city council to put a 90-day moratorium on accepting new housing projects. This requested moratorium does not include single-family homes. I ask that the council to advertise simultaneously while referring to committee for further discussion, enclosed as a draft of the proposed permitting moratorium. We currently have 13 projects that are permitted or under construction, totaling 1,888 units. We are waiting on the definitive regulations of the Governor's Housing Bill, so we can adapt and potentially capitalize on state grant funding that is relevant to housing and transportation. I anticipate that we will have information from the Commonwealth within 90 days and can make more informative decisions going forward. Please do not hesitate to contact me with any questions you may have. Sincerely, Arthur G. Vigent, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, having had the letter read, I will make a couple of points. In 2017, the mayor had submitted a similar letter, but actually recommended a six-month moratorium, where he stated that since this is a zoning amendment, it must follow Master in Law Chapter 40A, Section 5, which states an amendment must be submitted by a counselor, but not by the mayor. In referencing the Governor's Housing Bill, yes, at some point, when we have some more clarification from the state, Marlborough will need to create a district whereby right housing can be allowed. But I don't think that has anything to do with the current requirement of the code for special permits for housing, that is, a eight-vote in the affirmative for something to pass currently within the city of Marlborough. So, I personally am not sure that we need a moratorium, but I am sure that what we have before us is not a valid zoning amendment. It is simply a request for us to take action. And while I appreciate the mayor's concern, I feel we need to get a sense of the council first, if we really do need a moratorium, and I believe it can go to Urban Affairs for the discussion. When the moratorium was in effect in 2017, it was approved because we had as many as 13 projects being discussed in various forms in the city, and this would give us an opportunity to take a proactive approach to gain insight into current and future markets for housing, as well as assess the potential fiscal impact multifamily housing may have on the city finances. So, we hired RKG to conduct a study and created a report that was released in July of 2017. This document is on the city's website and is worth reviewing as we again have potential housing projects before us. How many we have before us is really an unknown. I am aware of at least one that was sent to the council tonight, and a second one that may be out there. My understanding for both of those projects is that before they can even come to us for a vote for a special permit, they need to be rezoned. So, I will put before you again, the council can simply deny the rezoning and the housing goes away. I'm moving to refer the mayor's request and the draft order to the Urban Affairs Committee to discuss. If there's consensus to move forward from the Urban Affairs Committee, then that motion can be considered, and the Urban Affairs Commissioner could be the petitioner in a request for a moratorium in a future agenda. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Roby. Counselor Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion, Mr. President, that we have a suspension and have the mayor address us.
Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules to allow the mayor to speak. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counselor Landers.
Mr. President, I'm sorry. Before we do the other one, there is a motion on the floor. If that does not carry, maybe there's no need to have the mayor speak, but I guess I would like to move forward with my motion. I did not hear a second yet, but you kind of jumped the gun.
Mr. President.
Counsel Orem.
I would rather hear from the mayor before making a decision on any vote tonight. Out of courtesy, he's the one that asked to do this. I think out of courtesy, we would ask the mayor to speak and then make a decision on Counsel Roby's motion or any other motions that may be in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Orem. So, you okay, Counsel Roby, to voting on a suspension to allow the mayor to speak?
I guess I'm okay. I think we could go ahead and have a second and then consider the request for the mayor to be part of the discussion, but I'm fine with letting the mayor speak.
Thank you, Counsel Roby. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll for a suspension to allow the mayor to speak on the housing issue.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers will vote yes on that.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby votes yes.
Counselor Tanara.
Counselor Tanara votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Ossing.
Counselor Ossing votes yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish votes yes.
Counselor Perlman.
Counselor Perlman votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
Motion to suspend the rules to allow the mayor to speak is approved. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, thank you, members. This is a little unusual, and I think I said it a couple of years ago when we did this before. We hear about the housing crisis and everything else, a build down at the State House that the governor's been working on for a number of years. Here I am asking you to support a moratorium. In Marlborough, we have a little bit of a different situation. We have over, I believe it's almost 1,000 units that have been built over the last 10 years. There's about 600 right now that are in the process or just finishing up. We probably have another 100 that will be before you for tweaking in the next couple of weeks, and we have several other complexes that do, as Counsel Roby said, need some tweaking on zoning before they can move forward. In addition to those, I've been contacted by five different complexes in different parts of the city about the possibility of additional housing. Unlike many communities, it's a great, great community to be in. We have a lot of amenities. We don't have the trouble that some communities are going through. We're financially sound. We have a great business community here. We have water and sewer virtually throughout the city, so it's very, very attractive for housing units. So, we've done more than our part over the last 10 years, and I'm sure the city of Marlborough, with your help, will do its part moving forward. The reason I'm asking to expedite the advertising is basically this moratorium starts when it's advertised. Now, if you have a meeting next week and say, "We're not gonna do the moratorium," the advertisement goes in tomorrow or Wednesday or whenever it goes in, it starts. If you have a meeting next week and say, "No," when you come back to the council and vote on it, that ends it. It's over. Only if you support it will it go the 90 days. And I'm not looking for it to do some kind of study. I'm looking for it to kind of get some, some, a handle on all the complexes coming into the city. Because as a city and as a city council, you need to start picking and choosing the best complexes for our city, not necessarily for the developer or for what the state's looking for, but what's best for our city. And we have some that are very, very good complexes that you've seen before you, and others that are gonna be coming in, and others that aren't so advantageous to the community. So, I'm asking for your support. I know that Counsel Roby brought up the bill that the governor has. We're expecting definitive regulations. They said late May, late spring, early summer. Will they? I hope they do, 'cause the majority of the language is all there. It's just tightening up, so if we do approve a zone, we know it qualifies for the state, because they're tying this zoning into allowing you to get more points for Mass Works and other grants. So, it's important for us to set that zone up, but we need to know where it is. So, if you have a complex, let's just say if we use the one at the campus, all right? We use the one at the campus. The zoning comes through from the state. The one at the campus would qualify for us. Why not put the zone right there and get that portion out of the way? Now, you're in complete control moving forward. We don't know what that regulation's gonna say, and that's what I'm nervous about. So, I do think we could use some more housing. What type will leave up to you. You're the one that votes on the city on special permits, but I'm asking you to immediately put this and vote for the advertising, as well as sending it to committee, allow Chairman Roby to take it up and have the discussion, and if you all come back and say, "We don't need it. We're not gonna do it," it goes away. But I assure you, if we don't do anything, we're gonna see at least three complexes sneak under the wire like they did last time. We had one last time. It snuck under the wire while we did something, and some of the attorneys out there are very, very good, and they've all been before you. So, with that, Mr. President, I'd be glad to answer questions, but that's my rationale, and like I said, hopefully I can get your support tonight.
I'll open up for questions from the counselors. Counsel Orem.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the mayor. As it was noted by Counsel Roby, is this something that would need a city counselor to sponsor, and if that is a concern, could that be done tonight as a, as a total agreement by the city council? The last thing we need is to have a technicality in the middle of this. If indeed it can't be sponsored by the mayor but by a city council or city counselor or city councilors, I was curious if that could be answered. And Counsel Roby is correct. I'm not sponsoring this order. I'm asking for the council to take action. The president said he would take that action to see if there was the support there to do it. So, I'm not, I'm not sponsoring it myself.
And if I could... If I can make a point of...
Counsel Roby.
...what it is, a point of information.
Counsel Roby.
When this was presented in 2017, it was presented in similar fashion, although it was stated in the letter that it was a request. There was a decision by then-President Clancy to allow a motion by the council to take this on as a council order. There was little discussion. I personally felt that that was the wrong thing to do. I still feel it's the wrong thing to do. It's not before us officially as an order, and I will stop speaking for other people at this point.
Counsel Orem.
Yes, I was, Mr. President, to you. Would you be sponsoring this tonight, then, if we decide to vote on this to be advertised?
So, Counsel Orem, I would encourage, not tonight, tomorrow, go look at the January 9, 2017 city council meeting. Similar type request. You were here.
I was.
Counsel Clancy stepped down, and as Counsel Roby articulated correctly, it was not sponsored, but came down and sponsored. I am happy, and I will take a poll of the counselors if they want to support it. I think, as the mayor indicated, if we support the advertisement, the advertisement goes in, and then if we, the Urban Affairs meets and takes it up and we decide we don't want it, we're done.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, I don't have a problem if you wish to do that. I just was curious the, how this function will work tonight. And last but not least is I can see in the horizon that we need to work so closely with the Planning Board, and I will put a push in for a city planner. Being faced with so much housing, it's time, and hopefully we'll see that in the city budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Orem. Have any other questions from the council? Counsel Wagner.
Thank you. Through you to the mayor. Can you say a few more words about who exactly will be doing what during the 90 days? How will that time be used to assess? Can you say a little bit more about what that time, what we'll do with that time?
I'm sorry. Could you ask that again? I haven't got, I haven't figured out the mass...
So, if we vote on this tonight and it's advertised tomorrow, the 90-day begins, so what exactly will happen during the 90 days? Like, who will be doing, who will be, how, who will be assessing the projects? What'll actually happen?
Nothing that is before you would be affected. They've already got under the wire. I think last time, there were proposals made to the Planning Board a couple of days later, and they snuck under the wire. 'Cause if they bring in a proposal before the advertisement, they can do that, and it kind of keeps them out of the mix. Single-family homes are not affected. We have a few in the city. Thankfully, we're seeing some stick-built homes being built. If someone wants to come in for a zoning amendment or some change to zoning, that isn't affected here. So, it's really to build the actual units, multifamily units. So, there are complexes that will be coming in. Originally, I had thought of the idea of mixed use, and then it came in, well, some of these projects that, you know, they're gonna throw in some resident, some commercial to make it mixed-used and kind of sneak under there. So, I pulled that out, so it's all multifamily housing.
I'm sorry, but my question was, so if we do this pause and for 90 days, what will we be, who will be doing the assessing, and what are we assessing? So, is it how to pick and choose new proj, like, what'll happen during those 90 days?
Well, I think, for one thing, this, the solicitor is coming down to do a little more training on, on special permits and approvals or non-approvals, and I think we'll get a better handle on which of the projects that have been voted on will be moving forward. I think we see a couple that they're gonna be coming in for amendments, so hopefully those move forward satisfactorily to the council. There's some that are gonna be stalled. I mean, we need to figure out how we can, you know, not have people with these pocket permits that last a lifetime. We have a tower down at the Hudson landfill that we approved years ago that there was no timeline on it, so it's not expiring. So, just some of those things. Are there properties on here that probably will never be built? There's a couple that I hope would not be built, but then we also may see, there's been a changeover on a couple properties in the city. What are they gonna be coming in for? My guess is they're coming in for housing, if you see where their locations are. Again, it just, it gives us a little bit of breathing time, and most importantly, gives us to get that definitive regulation from the state, from DHCD, on what's gonna be required under the new housing bill. If they require us to have two zones, and there's two complexes before you that fall, that would qualify for those zones, then put the zone right there. If it doesn't affect the complex too much, we already have the projects. Unlike many communities that are out searching for housing projects, we have options, which is great. The problem is they're just, they're coming in too quick.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, I think what Counsel Wagner's looking for is 90 days from now, I'm anticipating the solicitor coming back with some recommendation on what the Governor's Housing Bill means and how its impacts the city of Marlborough. Is that a fair assessment? I mean, I'm looking for something that says, 'cause Counsel Roby and I have discussed, you know, our interpretations, but last I checked, my legal degree, not so good.
You got it to the same place I did, Counsel.
Yes. So, but I think what Counsel Wagner's after, 90 days from now, we'd be anticipating a letter from the solicitor saying, "This is my interpretation of what the Governor's Housing Bill means and what the council's actions are." Is that...
Last I saw from DHCD, they said late spring, early summer. So, that's why we're hoping that within that window, we get the definitive regulations, and it's one less thing we have to worry about. and it's one less thing we have to worry about. I'm looking forward to passing a zone for the governor's bill, but I'm not looking to approve it throughout the city. And, and I'm just surprised that there's not other things within that housing bill, especially working with DHCD. And I don't know if they're gonna come out with the final regulations. So, um, again, it's just a little bit of breathing time. Hopefully, those regulations are done. You have a couple complexes you're still working on right now, uh, that you can finish up on in the next 90 days. 90 days goes pretty quick.
And, and I, I just wanna be clear, that the housing bill is more than just setting up the special zoning district for multif... There's a lot of mixed use and changing on votes in there. I mean, it's, it's, look at the, the DHC, I forget the name of the...
DHCD, yep.
Their website, their facts of information. It, it keeps growing every day, because they admit they do not even know all the information yet. So, what the mayor's asking is, do we wanna pause for 90 days so that we don't get saddled with something that we don't know? I mean, I can make the other argument, says we can't get something through here in 90 days, but that's a whole different argument. So, um, that, that's my interpretation. I'll open up, is, are you, so are you good, Council Wagner, or...
I'm just gonna say, just one more clarification. So, I wanna be clear. So, the 90 days, basically, we're not gonna do anything. We're just waiting for clarification of what the governor's bill actually means.
For new applications.
As opposed to, because what I would love to see, okay, there's all these projects. Who's stopping to look for what's actually affordable? What do we need? We more, we need more housing for actual workers who keep the city running that can't afford to live here. Do we need more luxury apartments that start at $2,500 a month? So, it's not a matter of, is this a good project in this location? But is anybody taking, stepping back and having a comprehensive assessment for housing in the city? And are we meeting all the needs? Or are we just building the projects that are going to generate the most revenue?
Well, one, one of the things we're gonna have coming up that's gonna address that is when the city clerk finally comes through with his census, hopefully, like hours away, I mean, we're, we're really there, we'll know about the 40B issues, and are we facing new 40B issues? That's gonna change the attitude of the council in here. If, now we're at 9.8%, um, so now we have to worry about, okay, um, do, do we have to change our criteria a little bit to make sure we get over that 10% again? I don't think we're gonna be there, but I, you know, who knows that population? The population the state is using right now for our, our COVID numbers is over 43,000 people. So, that's up 4,000 people in the last couple of years. So, where they get those, we haven't got clarification on that. My guess is, they got the inside scoop on the census that they're not sharing at this point. But it's coming, you know, it's, it's, it, I'm sure the clerk's been inundated, and it's starting to come out now. So, um, again, it's, it's breathing time. We might have answers on the 40B. We'll hopefully have definitive answers on the housing bill. And then you will have more information to make better decisions. You know, I know none of you wanna make decisions in a vacuum, nor do I, but, um, these are things we can't control.
Thank you, Council Wagner. Council Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Through the mayor, through you. So, this is really about timing, right? You know, because we're waiting for, um, the State House to actually get their housing regulations in place, because they can't file a permit for a zoned condition, you know, and then have the zoning changed from under them. You know, it's something that, the zoning has to be in place before the permit actually gets submitted to the city. Is that, that's really where you're going with this?
Yeah, I'm looking for a breather. That's all. I'm not, you know, we're not running down to MAPC to do a big plan, and hopefully, it's done in 90 days.
Yeah.
I'm hoping we get census populations, and we get the governor's bill by the end of the 90.
No, I, I think that the analysis that was done in 2017 was actually very good. We've used it within the kitty, uh, within the city to evaluate various projects, and I think it's been pretty effective. So, um, I understand, you know, that this is a, a situation, and hopefully, you know, the State House will actually get the rack together in 90 days. If it doesn't, I don't wanna see it go any further than that, unfortunately. Yeah.
That's your decision, Councilor.
I understand.
Thank you, Council Dusset. Councilor Pearlman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have more of a general comment and then a question from the mayor. Similarly, it's that Council Wagner was just reflecting on, uh, the clear need for affordable housing in the community, as well as senior housing. I know that's something I hear a lot from constituents of concerns of being able to stay in the community, if they're downsizing their home, or, um, young professionals who, you know, are now no longer living with their parents. So, that's just something I wanna make sure the council is aware of moving forward. And then my question, um, for you, the mayor, is, you know, if we don't have the information that we need within those 90 days, what will happen? Then will we, I know it's sort of like the council's decision, but would you be sending down a recommendation to extend that 90 days as the one, I think, as Councilor Robey mentioned, for 2017 was for six months?
I, I think that will completely depend on the timing. If, if the state says, "We're coming out with it next week, and we're gonna miss a meeting," maybe we extend it one meeting. I would send down a recommendation. The council can, uh, do with it a, as it wishes. I mean, it, I know we're really at their, at, at their mercy as far as coming out with the information. So, I, I don't wanna make a commitment one, one way or the other. And who knows? If these, five of these complexes go away over the next 90 days, or they come back in with plans that aren't for housing, uh, that makes a big difference also. But I anticipate that there's gonna be more housing complexes coming in.
Well, no, I appreciate that. I definitely echo, um, Councilor Orem's sentiment about a planner. It seems like a lot of these things need a, a macro approach, since we're getting bombarded with a lot of proposals. So, um, I hope that even though there isn't necessarily a formal request along with the 90 days in terms of a study, it would be nice to maybe have material gathered from some of that housing data that's been done before, especially for new councilors, or just links shared with us, so we can be up to date about what was learned, uh, the last time around.
If you could get back to the president, any additional information you'd want over those 90 days, and I'll make sure we try to get it together.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Pearlman. Any other councilors? Any other councilors? I'll go back to Councilor Robey.
Thank you. Um, can I just bring up a couple of comments that are just general comments that have been going on? I, I guess I will first state that my law degree comes from the same place as, uh, Council Aussings and the mayor's. However, I do know how to read, and if you go on the state website, it's very clear that there's a difference between the changes made to Section 5 of Chapter 40A, where we can, if we want to make amendments to our code, and then those amendments would allow six votes for housing. If we do absolutely nothing, our current eight votes still is in effect. What we are responsible for is creating at least one district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right. And yes, we and all the other communities that this has affected are waiting for some clarification. However, to me, the, there's no need to have a moratorium, because we need to wait on where we're gonna do something by right. We, we need to understand, we can vote no currently on any proposal to rezone, so that housing could then come before us, and we can vote no on any current proposals for housing. We have chosen not to, and I went back and looked, since the moratorium was in effect in 2017, we have approved every single request for housing except for one, which was an accessory unit on Williams Street. So, the council may disagree with the mayor, and we certainly have the right to do that. And he has the right to disagree with us. But the council is the special permitting authority, and with eight votes, whether he likes it or not, it gets approved. So, we need to be maybe in agreement that we need to look at that responsibility a little more carefully, and look at the bigger picture on what we approve. But I don't know what a 90-day moratorium is really going to get us. We still can not approve things. And we could still approve the things that are being held in abeyance for 90 days, once they come back on the table, because they will come before us, now or 90 days. So, thank you.
Any other discussions?
Mr. President.
Councilor Orem.
Uh, and listening both to the mayor and the city councilors, I still feel the breathing room of the 90 days is something that will give all the councilors an opportunity to look back at what we did back in January of 2017, as well as look at where we're heading, and what do we want to see? And as we've seen in past projects, uh, what are we doing for, it was just mentioned earlier, what are we doing for the city workers? Can they afford to live in the city of Marlboro anymore? Can the seniors afford to live in the city of Marlboro? My own mother went through that situation. If she sold her house, she couldn't downsize because of the cost of the other units. That's what I'm hoping we'll do in these 90 days. And then, yes, there could be a bunch of projects waiting after 90 days, and we'll have to assess at that time. And as noted, you know, the eight votes are needed if a, if a special permit is required. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Orem. Any other discussion from the councilors?
All right, so, let me see if I can synthesize what I've heard. So, if the council wants the moratorium, there would have to be a motion to advertise. As Council Robey said, she would take it up in Urban Affairs, and if the Urban Affairs meeting turns out they don't want it, then it goes away. They'd vote to discontinue the moratorium. The, the process would be, if Council Robey wants, would be to, uh, refer it to Urban, to Planning, to advertise a public hearing, and to advertise the order that I'm happy to sponsor, or if any other councilor wants to sponsor it, so that we clear the same hurdle that we had in 2017. So, if that's okay, I'll ask Council Robey if she would like to make that motion, or a different one. Because there's a motion by Council Robey on the floor just to send it to Urban, but it has not been seconded.
Right, and so, I, I will reiterate, I'm, I'm gonna be stubborn. I'm going to stick with my original motion, which is to refer the letter and the draft order to Urban Affairs for discussion. If, in fact, Urban Affairs feels we want to do this, then it can be advertised, and we can move forward. I don't see what a couple of days of waiting to throw that advertisement, if, in fact, we're going to vote to not do the moratorium. But that's my motion.
Council Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Just, uh, general point of order, and just in general, I, I think the one thing that the mayor said that brings true for me is that if you think you're going to submit a moratorium, you do it as quickly as possible. You don't delay, because everyone's gonna panic and try to get everything into the system as quickly as possible. So, I, I think the advertising is critical if we're gonna look into this forward. As far as pointed order goes, can a motion be made just to advertise, and then have, uh, Council Robey's, uh, other motions continue as separate?
I guess, I'll, I'll, I'll look to see if anybody says anything different, but I don't believe there's any reason why I couldn't just advertise it.
Motion to advertise, and that would be it, that would be your motion, or your...
Your motion to advertise the order.
Yeah.
And then send it to Urban Affairs.
As a separate vote?
Well, we, we, but I'd have to have a public hearing at some point. Doesn't mean I have to set the public hearing date today, or... Solicitor Grossfield on?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Good evening. I asked for a suspension of the rules to Solicitor, have Solicitor Grossfield weigh in. Anyone wanna make that suspension request?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll to allow the solicitor to speak.
Council Irish.
Council Irish votes yes.
Council Dusset.
Council Dusset votes yes.
Council Navin.
Council Navin votes yes.
Council Aussing.
Council Aussing votes yes.
Council Pearlman.
Council Pearlman votes yes.
Council Tanara.
Council Tanara votes yes.
Council Landers.
Council Landers votes yes.
Council Orem.
Council Orem votes yes.
Council Dumas.
Council Dumas votes yes.
Council Wagner.
Council Wagner votes yes.
Council Robey.
Council Robey votes yes.
One yeas.
The motion to suspend the rules to allow the solicitor to speak is approved. Mr. Solicitor, the question before you is, Council Dusset, correct me if I've got it wrong, can we advertise the moratorium without, hold, setting a public hearing date just yet, and still send it to Urban Affairs for discussion?
As two separate motions.
There'd be two separate motions, that's correct. But I have a motion on the floor currently with Council Robey, and you have one potentially.
I just want clarification. I'm not making the motion.
Okay.
It's a point of order.
I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Solicitor.
Sure, thank you. Through, through you, Mr. President, to the councilors. So, through, to, because the advertising is, is advertising the public hearing, essentially, you, you also have the requirement to refer the zoning proposal to the planning board within 14 days. So, essentially, I think, if you're making a motion tonight to, for the council to, to consider the zoning amendment, you'd wanna do them all, as you, as you did earlier for the other, you know, for the zoning map amendment. You'd wanna follow that same process, so you could advertise.
Okay. Does that help, Council Dusset?
So, it has to be one motion.
So, so it'd be a motion to refer to Urban, to Planning, to advertise, and set a public hearing, which would be for May 24th? If that's, if there is that motion. Right now, there's only a motion to refer to Urban. Any discussion? Council Dumas.
So, let's play this hardball game. So, if I was to second Council Robey's discussion or motion, we're all here. So, if it goes to Urban or not, then why don't, if it doesn't go, then we'll have to advertise it, because everyone would want it to be advertised, correct?
There's a nice spot up here for you at some point in time.
It's fine, fine with me, but we're discussing, about discussing.
Yep.
So, I'll go ahead and second the motion, and let's play push comes to shove, and see what we wanna do.
Motion's been made and seconded to refer to the Urban Affairs Committee. Discussion on the motion. Council Pearlman.
You're on mute.
You're on mute.
You're, you're on mute, Council Pearlman.
Sorry about that. For the Urban Affairs meeting, would this be the one that's gonna be scheduled for May 4th, or would this be an earlier meeting that we would then schedule?
If I can respond, Mr. President, I do not believe, well, actually, there is time to amend the, um, the agenda for the May 4th, so this could be added to that meeting. I, I think the idea was to try to get this done as quickly as possible. So, regardless of whether my motion carries and it's referred, or a potential motion to refer, it would still, the sooner the better for Urban Affairs.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I was wondering if it would be occurring in a upcoming meeting rather than being pushed out. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion to refer to Urban Affairs? Council Dusset.
Just for clarification, um, if this is, uh, vote against, it basically means that a second motion could be made to include advertising, right?
I would ask to amend this particular, what's that? If this one, yeah, I don't know if this passes or fails. I don't know what the vote's...
Right, if it fails, we could do another motion.
If it fails, we get to do another motion, because we gotta send it somewhere.
Right, right, okay. That's where I was going with it, but thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, on the motion to refer to Urban Affairs, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Council Aussing.
Council Aussing votes no.
Council Dusset.
Council Dusset votes no.
Council Tanara.
Council Tanara votes no.
Council Navin.
Council Navin votes no.
Council Robey.
Council Robey votes yes.
Council Wagner.
Council Wagner votes, votes no. No, votes no.
Council Landers.
Council Landers votes no.
Council Irish.
Council Irish votes no.
Council Pearlman.
Council Pearlman votes no.
Council Dumas.
Council Dumas votes no.
Councilor Orem.
Councilor Orem votes no.
One yeas, ten nays, sir.
The motion does not pass. Entertain another motion. Counsel Dusset. Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Motion to send to Urban Affairs to advertise, and what else, and to the planning board. And a hearing.
And a public hearing.
On whichever date is the most congruent.
Motion made and seconded to refer the housing moratorium to Urban Affairs, the planning board, to advertise and set a public hearing for May 24th. Discussion on the motion.
Mr. President.
Counsel Oram.
Does this resolve the technicality of a counselor sponsoring it by the motion? Is that considered the sponsorship of this request to place the moratorium?
Well, I think the mayor can send the letter down, any counselor can sponsor it. I'm happy to be that counselor that sponsored it. If that addresses your concern, Counsel Oram.
Yeah, I just, I respect Counsel Robie's review on this, and I just do not want to see a technicality causing it to fail.
Thank you, Counsel Oram. Any other discussion on the motion?
This is Counsel Robie. I just want to state that we probably will not take this up on May 4th because we need to wait for the planning board, and we need to wait for a public hearing. So this will definitely sit on the table with a more, with the moratorium in effect, obviously, at least until May 24th. Thank you.
That's, you are correct, Counsel Robie. The moratorium will go into effect as soon as the city clerk can get it advertised, which would probably be this week. And then the formality of doing the Urban Affairs meeting, the planning board meeting, and the public hearing will all follow. But the moratorium will be in place if this ordinance, I mean, if this motion is passed. Any other discussion on the motion?
Mr. President.
Counsel Oram.
Yes, and again, I would just ask that, I know we're motioning to adopt the mayor's request, but I would ask that, and if no one wants to, I will, that one of us councilors sponsor this request.
Would you like to be the sponsor, Counsel Oram?
Well, I'll yield to you as the president, as we did with our previous president, if you so wish.
I'm hap, I am happy.
Mr. President, I think we have the solicitor on with this, but I believe Counsel Dusset making the motion makes him the sponsor.
Nice. There we go. One of those step in and be accountable. So congratulations, Counsel Dusset.
Thanks, David.
Good job. So on the motion to refer to Urban, the planning board, advertise, and set a public hearing for May 24th, is there any other discussions? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Robie.
Counsel Robie votes no.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Tenara.
Counsel Tenara votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Ten ye, one nay, sir.
On the motion to refer to the Urban Affairs Committee, the planning board, to advertise and set a public hearing for May 24th, it is approved. Ten in favor, one opposed. That was easy. Agenda item number 12.
Communication from Code Enforcement Officer Ethan Lippett regarding requests for approval of a freestanding sign for mobile at 656 Boston Post Road East within the Wayside District.
Counsel, Mr. President, this is Counsel Robie.
Counsel Robie.
I had some questions to ask Enforcement Officer Lippett. I have not had a response, therefore, I'm going to move to refer this to Urban Affairs.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Urban Affairs Committee. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Tenara.
Counsel Tenara votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Robie.
Counsel Robie votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
On the motion to refer to the Urban Affairs Committee, it is approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item 13.
Application for Massachusetts Electric to install a new pole, number 45-2, within the public right-of-way approximately 103 feet west of pole 25-1 on Forest Street.
Counsel Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please refer to Public Services and also set the date for a public hearing.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Public Services Committee and set a public hearing for May 10th, May 10th. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll to refer to Public Service and set a public hearing for May 10th.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Tenara.
Counsel Tenara votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Counsel Robie.
Counsel Robie votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
The motion to refer to the Public Service Committee and set a public hearing for May 10th is approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item 14.
Application for modification of a special permit for Minor Property Group LLC to condition number 20, signage to allow for increased signage at 408 Maple Street.
President, this is Counsel Robie.
Counsel Robie.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to refer to Urban Affairs to set a public hearing for May 24th and to advertise.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Urban Affairs Committee to advertise and to set a public hearing for May 24th. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll to send to Urban Affairs, set a public hearing for May 24th, and to advertise.
Counsel Tenara.
Counsel Tenara votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Robie.
Counsel Robie votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
On the motion to refer to the Urban Affairs Committee, advertise and set a public hearing for May 24th, it is approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item 15.
Application for site plan review from Attorney Brian Falk on behalf of Woho to construct a mixed-use project within the Marlboro Village District at 28 South Bolton Street.
Mr. President, this is Counsel Robie.
Counsel Robie.
Thank you, Mr. President. When the city council created the Marlboro Village District, we allowed mixed-use properties by right, and we made the city council the site plan authority. So although we had a approval for a site plan for 28 South Bolton Street, there's evidently a new owner, and so we are looking at a new site plan. So move to refer to Urban Affairs.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Urban Affairs Committee. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll to refer to the Urban Affairs Committee.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Tenara.
Counsel Tenara votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Robie.
Counsel Robie votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
On the motion to refer to the Urban Affairs Committee, it is approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item 16.
Application for renewal of a junk dealer, second-hand dealer license for TVI Inc., DBA Savers, at 222 A East Main Street.
Counsel Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please refer to Public Service Committee.
Uh, motion's made and seconded to refer to the Public Services Committee. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Tenara.
Counsel Tenara votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Robie.
Counsel Robie votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
On the motion to refer to the Public Services Committee, it is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item 17, Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I need to recuse myself from this vote.
Let the record reflect, Counsel Dumas will abstain from this particular item.
Application for renewal of a junk dealer, second-hand dealer license, Gerald Dumas, DBA Dumas &amp; Sons Secondhand Store, 65 Mechanic Street.
Counsel Landers.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Please refer to Public Service Committee.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Public Services Committee. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Tenara.
Counsel Tenara votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Counsel Dumas has abstained. Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Robie.
Counsel Robie votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Ten ye with one abstention, sir.
On the motion to refer to the Public Service Committee is approved. Ten in favor with one abstention. Agenda item 18.
Application for renewal of a junk dealer, second-hand dealer license, Roman Kim Yaragov, DBA Arthur &amp; Sons Shoe Repair, 107 Main Street.
Counsel Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President, again. Please refer to Public Service Committee.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Public Services Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Tenara.
Counsel Tenara votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Robie.
Counsel Robie votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
On the motion to refer to the Public Service Committee, it is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item 19.
Minutes of Boards, Commissions, and Committees. Mr. President.
Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file the minutes of the Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the minutes. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Counsel Tenara.
Counsel Tenara votes yes.
Counsel Robie.
Counsel Robie votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Eleven ye.
On the motion to accept and place on file the minutes, it is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item 20.
Claims. Mr. President.
Counsel Dusset.
Motion to submit the claims to legal.
Motion made and seconded to submit the claims to the legal department. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Tenara.
Counsel Tenara votes yes.
Counsel Robie.
Counsel Robie votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Oram votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
On the motion to refer the claims to the legal department, it is approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Reports of committees. Counsel Wagner.
I'm the only one. The Human Services Committee met on Monday, April 12th. The meeting convened at 7:00. All members of the Human Services Committee were present. Counsel Dumas, Counsel Irish, and myself. Present, we were present in chamber, oh, also present in, present in chamber were Counsel Ossing, Doucette, Landers, and Navin, and Counselors Pearlman and Orem participated remotely. Mass General Brigham representatives Christopher Philbin and John Fernandez participated remotely. We had one item on the agenda, which was item number 21, 188262, which was a public informational meeting to allow Mass General Brigham leadership to present additional details regarding the proposed Mass General Brigham hospital expansion. Uh, we had a PowerPoint presentation that was submitted by hospital representatives detailing the proposed Mass General Brigham's plans for the proposed facility and the services that they would offer. The facility was described as being a multi-specialty site, offering primary care, behavioral health, specialty care, imaging, ambulatory surgery, all in one location, including in-person digital care services. And the presentation specifically addressed the Westboro Project and its benefits to the Metro West area. Human Services Committee members and counselors asked questions and proposed, about the proposed expansion, and shared concerns, and since this was a committee meeting, it was not open to public comment. A motion was made by Counsel Dumas, seconded by the Chair, to accept and place on file the information shared by Mass General Brigham representatives. The motion carried three to zero, and the meeting adjourned at 8:07.
Well done. Any other reports of committees? Counsel Irish.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Public announcement, Finance Committee will be meeting on Monday, May 3rd, 2021, at 6:30 PM, and we will take up the TIF agreement with BJ's Wholesale Club. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Irish. Any other committees? Any other reports?
Mr. President, this is Counsel Roby with another public service announcement. The Urban Affairs Committee is also meeting on May 4th at 7:00. We are going to be taking up the solicitor's PowerPoint on voting on special permits, and I believe a signed special permit.
Thank you, Counsel Roby. Anybody else? Counsel Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Service Committee will be meeting on May 4th at 6:30 PM.
Six thirty. Anyone else? No one wants. Okay. Agenda item 21.
Order number 21-108232, communication from Mayor Viget with the appointment of Robert Goff to send to the Retirement Board for a three-year term effective on the date of council confirmation. Replacing David Keane, whose term expired on January 31st, 2021. Recommendation of the Personnel Committee is to approve.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the recommendation of the Personnel Committee. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President.
Counsel Orem. Counsel Orem.
As noted at the Personnel Committee, I'm separating two of the issues that were brought to our attention related to the Retirement Board. So unfortunately, the Freedom of Information Act, from what I've heard, has not been resolved. So I cannot vote on this in good conscience, so I'll be voting present. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Orem. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counselor Ossing.
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Tanara.
Counsel Tanara votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Doucette.
Counsel Doucette votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes present.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes present.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Ten yea, two present, sir.
Can't be. We don't have 12 councils.
Oops, excuse me. Can't do math. That's why I'm not the finance director.
On the motion to approve the appointment, it is approved. Eleven, nine voting in favor, two voting present. It is approved. Agenda item 22.
Order number 21-108242, transferring the amount of $158,128.90 for the Department of Public Works as requested by Commissioner Diavol, and the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the transfer request. Is there any discussion on the transfer? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll to approve the transfer request.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Ossing.
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Tanara.
Counsel Tanara votes yes.
Counsel Doucette.
Counsel Doucette votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Double checking my math, eleven yea.
On the motion to approve the transfer, it is approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item number 23.
Order number 21-108244A, proposed amendment to Chapter 67 Finance, Section 28 Principal Assessor Powers and Duties of the Code to amend qualifications of the principal assessor, and the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve, and the proposed ordinance was properly advertised on April 9th, 2021, and the 10-day requirement has been met.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee to approve the amendment.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the change to the ordinance for the principal assessor. Is there any discussion on the motion?
And, Mr. President, two. This would be four stages as well.
That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Nope, thank you, Counsel Irish. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, as Counsel Irish mentioned, this is an ordinance change, so it has to go through the four stages. All those in favor of suspending the first reading and approving the second reading, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Ossing.
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Tanara.
Counsel Tanara votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Doucette.
Counsel Doucette votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Eleven yea, sir.
Suspending the first reading and adopting the second is approved. Item two, all those in favor of the passage to be enrolled, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Ossing.
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Tanara.
Counsel Tanara votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Doucette.
Counsel Doucette votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Eleven yea, sir.
The motion to, or this passing the, the motion to passage it to be enrolled is approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Passage to be ordained.
Counsel Doucette.
Counsel Doucette votes yes.